All right, bring a meeting to order for tonight, Tuesday, September 12th. As we start off every meeting, we'll read the mission statement. Norfolk Public Schools offers a safe, joyful, and challenging learning environment that meets the needs of our diverse students. Through school, family, and community partnerships, we provide an education that inspires lifelong learners, cultivates a caring and productive citizens of our ever-changing world. Roll call?
Jeff Chalmers.
Jeff Curry.
Paul Cochran.
Mark Flaherty.
Thomas Doyle.
Ingrid Lardie.
All right. Public comment? Just get past that one. Um, let's see, first thing we've got is correspondence, which requires a vote, which is a gift. We have a gift, a substantial gift, of total $20,000 to both, uh, let's see, this is from, what is it, the PTO, and this is the $10,000 each for both Freeman Kennedy and HOD. I don't think it specifies how this is being used, but just sort of a generic gift to be used as we sit fit going forward, which is...
Unrestricted.
Among the most generous gifts I can ever recall receiving.
Yeah, it had a very successful fund run, and both the buildings are talking about the best use of the funds.
Wow, okay. So anyway, do we have a motion to accept this incredibly generous donation?
I make a motion that we accept this very generous donation.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
I...
All right, so we didn't want any discussion on that one, so just take the money and move on since before they change their mind. Exactly. Ask no questions, go on. Um, okay, so moving on to myself. So then, we, one issue that we have that I think we had initially discussed either in June?
At your first...
I think at June meeting, yeah. We couldn't do the August meeting because we only had the three of us here. We wanted to wait till the full committee was here, but was membership for the various subcommittees, specifically the Budget and Superintendent Evaluation Subcommittee. So I guess we'll start off with Budget first. So basically, at the end of this, we're gonna have to make a vote, or have a vote, as far as what the final makeup of these, both of these subcommittees will be. So as I recall the issue and jump in where I remember this incorrectly, I, previously had been myself, Paul, and Mark that were on the Budget Subcommittee. Jeff Curry had asked to be on Budget Subcommittee, if I remember this correctly. And then, I think that's where we were then trying to figure out how to go forward with this. Actually, Ingrid, you've gotten some feedback from...
I checked with legal counsel about the membership for subcommittees, and the, what they have said is that the Subcommittee should have no more than two members, and that the School Committee Chair would be one of the two members if they're a voting member of the Subcommittee. You can technically have the School Committee Member, a School Committee Chair, serve on a committee in an advisory capacity as long as they're a non-voting member, but they said that that's very, um, you have to be very careful about not ending up with an open meeting law violation. If, if it appears that the committee's making a recommendation as a whole that would be a vote, that could be slippery. So their advice is to keep Subcommittee membership to two members, and if the chair participates, have them participate as a voting member, but they did say that's up to the committee if you want to choose the alternate course. You just have to be very careful about documenting recommendations, votes, and indicating all the meeting minutes that the chair is there as a non-voting member.
Seem to indicate that maybe... Well, we could do, if the three of you wanted to do that, and then I just essentially would not go, because I mean, it's still an open meeting, and still notice is given of it, so everybody's invited to attend, so that's fine. So that's how the three of us were able to meet...
Right.
In the prior years, so that's fine. Um, I mean, at the end of the day, anything that is discussed or recommendations come forward, we're gonna vote for as full committee anyway, so I don't know if there's necessarily... Like, I'm fine with it. I don't really have an issue, like, if you wanna, I mean, I would like, it would be nice to have maybe a different voice for things. Um, I mean, I've been on it since pretty much inception, since me being on the School Committee, so I don't think there's anything necessarily wrong with getting a different voice.
So you could suggest if you wanted to have Paul and Jeff be the Subcommittee, and then you could attend a meeting periodically if needed, but you'd have to just say that you're there in attendance as a non-voting member, if you chose to attend...
Okay.
As a non-member of the Subcommittee.
So we can have...
It feels like a challenge.
Yeah, so basically, two of you, so yeah, so basically, your choices are, two of you agree to be the Subcommittee itself, I could then attend, as you were saying, whatever, just as a non-voting member, and then you guys would just be on your own, because otherwise then it becomes a quorum of the committee.
Right, exactly.
That's the issue.
Yep.
Um, I, it doesn't bother me one way or the other. I'm happy to not attend, but then between the three, we've gotta figure out what's the best course of action in terms of which two.
Well, I had agreed that I would give up my spot...
But to give Jeff that opportunity.
...for giving him an opportunity.
Okay, so we want to stick with that, then?
And that I would like to take on the legislative rep part of the, uh...
How do you feel about Thomas not being a regular...
Well, if you do that...
Have less of a voice?
And...
What's that?
Voting member. I actually guess there's no voting, because...
You being a voting member and Thomas not being a voting member?
Yeah, to me, that's what I think the point...
Well, it sounds like Thomas would not be part of the Subcommittee, except he could periodically attend if, if needed, but when he...
It would just be specified that I'm non-voting at that time, which I think is fine.
But he wouldn't be at all, all meetings necessarily. It would be a...
I'm okay with that. You okay with that?
I am, are you?
I guess I am. Jeff, just one, Paul is vicious during these meetings. He's incredibly angry. All right, so that will be the, all right, so then, we need a motion for that, so that Subcommittee is then established, so I can have a motion?
I make a motion that we approve the recommendation for the Budget Subcommittee.
Paul Cochran and Jeffrey Curry as Subcommittee Members.
Paul Cochran and Jeff Curry.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Can I second it?
Sure.
No.
I second.
Oh, I was gonna say, Tom, did you second, or are we saying you need a second?
I said, do we have a second?
Oh, I thought you seconded, I apologize.
I was like, wow, that's gonna be awkward.
Any further discussion?
Any further discussion there? Okay, so all in favor?
Aye.
Okay?
It's almost like we know what we're doing.
Uh, and thank you to Mark for offering to do that, that's very nice of you. Um, all right, so then, moving on, so then, we just need to determine how we want to set up the Superintendent Evaluation Subcommittee, which again, off memory, I believe, was Jeff, Mark, and myself, correct?
And I think what we discussed at the last meeting was changing the process, and instead of having a Subcommittee, having all members of the Committee contribute to the evaluation, but we didn't have a full Committee here at the time, so I think we just wanted to review and make sure.
Yeah, we did put a motion for that, right?
It's a process that many districts use, basically, every member of the Committee would, would contribute their comments to the evaluation, and then the Chair would summarize on behalf of the Committee and present the full evaluation for vote.
I like that idea, just because, if I remember right, I remember, I think, the last year when we did this, I think, Paul, you had some questions, then since you weren't privy to the information, sort of had to play catch-up on, whereas if you were part of it from the onset, then don't have to do that. So I'd be inclined to go that route.
I like that idea.
All right, so, so do we have a motion, then, to form the Committee? Essentially, there wouldn't be a Subcommittee, we would all...
Contribute.
Motion as presented.
Second it.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Um, all right, so then, we need to have a formal signing ceremony for the teacher's contract.
Yep.
Actually, it was just that one, like I said, I wanted to take over the legislative...
Yes, I think we agree to do that regardless, right?
We didn't have that on the agenda for tonight. Um, I know you raised that before, but it's not on the agenda, so can we put that on the agenda for the...
Yeah, so put that for October to follow up on that, but...
For October? Okay. 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 Need a Chromebook purchase before the signing.
Oh, it's good, okay. Uh, and then, so, we also do need a vote, we're gonna, for Pam, she has got an Apple...
An old iPad that she's been taking notes on for the Committee, but since we're switching to Chrome and everything's in Google Docs, the iPad doesn't have Google Docs, so we'd like to purchase her, or it's not as efficient, we'd like to purchase a Chromebook. Um, they're only $250, and the School Committee has that money in your budget, so we're looking for a motion.
Okay, so we have a motion to that.
Make a motion that we purchase a Chromebook.
Any second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, now, we're going on to the signing of the NTA contract ceremony.
Yep.
I'm not gonna make you hobble over all, can I bring that over to you?
I didn't even know you were on crutches, I didn't even notice.
Do you need me to carry you? Where's the actual, oh, do you have it?
Nope. She's got the keys.
Ah, I gotta, I gotta... All right. And then, the last thing we need to figure out was actually the warrant schedule, which I believe, again, from last meeting, I think we discussed going through December...
Yep.
With it, and then, in an effort, we don't want to plan out the whole year, just in case, it's just not realistic, too many things get thrown in there and change, so that was the decision we made, was sort of, kind of planned it out for, through December. Now, I just gotta find the actual, that's exhibit two, right?
Yep.
Okay, so if everybody could go to that, is there any questions on that?
No.
Or just any issues you see as far as, you know, get that signed and, and brought in?
Nope.
Okay. So we'll implement that, we don't need a vote or anything for that, so that's fine, that's just more of an FYI type thing for everybody to know going forward.
I would say the only recommendation is in situations where we don't have someone available, if we could adopt the e-signing capabilities, I mean, DocuSign is one example, really cheap, even, I think you could actually get up to three or four signatures, signings per month, free, so it might be one extent of having someone to come in, just email it. I mean, I could sign it from my phone, it would take me three clicks and I'm done.
Yeah, Barbara, did they, town not accept that?
Um, yeah, I have to check with Todd Lindmark...
Yeah.
To see if the town is able to accept.
In the past, they have not been willing to accept electronic signatures.
There's some municipal reason in terms of, like, the, they haven't caught up with that yet, essentially, is the short version of it.
Yeah.
So it's an excellent idea, just we have involved in that.
I work at the IRS and Fannie and Freddie, I don't know why the, but I get what you're going with that.
On the town side, they are, have not accepted it in the past, but we can certainly re-raise it and see if it's a potential future possibility.
Got it, totally get it.
Eventually, we'll evolve to 2008. Right now, that's not there, so this, this should hopefully keep it a little easier and then minimize the amount of time Barbara's chasing us around to get stuff signed, because I know stuff obviously occasionally comes up, so...
The, on that schedule?
Yes.
The business office dates column has Thursday, November 23rd.
Is that Thanksgiving?
Thanksgiving. So close.
I'm sorry.
So, is that a problem?
So it would be Wednesday, the 22nd?
No, you won't.
I guess I'll be here since I put this guy out.
You're bound by it, that's all.
So it would be Tuesday, probably that week, probably Tuesday.
That makes sense.
They probably want it by Tuesday.
Yeah.
Okay, that's fine.
So the 21st.
And then, okay.
Okay.
Does it make...
Thank you.
Is it okay, then, the left-hand column, the Tuesday, November 14th? Yeah, okay, that's...
That should be okay.
All right, so we keep that, and that's the only thing, actually, and let's see, yeah, because Christmas is, okay, that should be fine. All right, uh, move on to Ingrid.
Okay. So as far as the opening of schools, it feels like it was quite a while ago now, but it was a very smooth opening for us. We had no real bus issues, students arrived smoothly, safely, we had a lot of adults, additional adults available at both schools to greet kids, to welcome them, to help them find their classrooms if they had any trouble, so it went very smoothly. We did have, the first week of school, we have a staggered start for kindergarten, so on the first day, kindergarten students came with their parents to visit the classroom and meet their teacher, and then half of the class started on Wednesday and the other half started Thursday. So the first full day for all the kindergarten students together was on Tuesday, September 5th. As far as staffing at this point, all of our professional teaching positions have been filled, we do have two anticipated retirements in November, and both of those positions have already been filled, and a transition plan is in place. SAC program is still looking for three part-time assistants for their program. They do, they are fully staffed to meet the required adult-child ratios, but they are looking for student help in the afternoons. At the time I wrote this, we were still looking for one cafeteria monitor for Freeman Kennedy, but that has since been filled, so we have no openings at this point. We do have an anticipated maternity leave we're working on, but other than that, we're fully staffed, so we're in good shape. Cool. Any questions on school opening? Okay, great. Next in your packet, you have, by policy, we're supposed to provide a quarterly report of the school facilities rental, so you have a copy of that in your packet. It's probably really miniscule to read on your Google Chromebook, so I'll just tell you, overall, we brought in $12,838.75 last year in building rental fees. The biggest rental are CYO, we've had Girl Scouts, Boy Scouts, basketball, Medfield Basketball, Soccer Club of Norfolk, the Softball League, so it's mostly recreation use of the gym that contributes to that. Any questions on facilities rental?
Nope.
Nope, okay. The next thing in your packet, so at our last meeting, we talked about having the full Committee contribute to the Superintendent's evaluation. So what I've put together, last year, you did my public evaluation in October, so I don't know if you want to stay with the same timeline, you have to do an annual evaluation, so October and November would be the target timeline. What I've included for you is, so the School Committee has to evaluate me first on my performance towards goals, the goals that you approved for me last year, so in our June meeting, I gave you a summary of my progress towards goals, and we discussed that at the meeting, so I included that for you, for evaluation purposes. You also have to evaluate my performance against the four key standards in the Superintendent's rubric, so I've provided you with a update of different action steps and things that I have done over the course of last year under each of the standards, just so that you'd have some background information. I also gave you a copy in the back of the packet of the actual evaluation instrument, and I can have Pam send this all to you electronically, it looks like this, so there's a, the front page is where you evaluate me towards, against the goals, and the goals are listed, and then there's each of the four standards. So I can send this, have her send this to you electronically. The only thing that you have to be careful about is that you can't collaborate electronically with each other, you have to fill this out and send it to Thomas, but it can't be shared among you, because that would be an open meeting ish, violation issue, so I can't put it in Google Drive for you to share, and I'll build on, you have to do it individually. Okay? Any questions on that?
Let's try to work through this, so if we all individually compile or add to this...
They can, they can do their individual comments and send them to you, and then you can put them all together into one document, but they can't collaborate.
No, I understand that part, I'm just saying, we could have, in theory, we could have three people think something, and then a poll opposite by two people, that...
Right, and then the Chair would have to make that...
Okay, so I've gotta sort through it, essentially, okay.
Yeah, although, the final evaluation then comes back to the full Committee for vote, so you can make, you might have to make a judgment call, but then it comes back to the full Committee for discussion.
We all should agree on it.
Yeah.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay. Any questions on that?
Do we need to set out a timeline for that, as far as when the extra, just ask me by November?
Well, the requirement is that you do an annual public evaluation.
Right.
Last year, you did October, so if you wanted to do the same timeline, October or November would probably be fine.
What, do you think about picking a date, or just...
Which meeting you wanted to, yeah.
Yeah, I didn't know if, like, for example, the October meeting, are we anticipating a lot of things, and it makes sense to do it in November, or reverse?
Budget's gonna start up in November.
Budget will start in November, and in November, you'll probably have the MCAS presentation, so that tends to be a longer meeting.
Okay, so we'd want to do it in October.
Yeah, I just don't know if that gives you enough time, that's four weeks, I don't know if that, if people feel comfortable with that, and...
All right, what do you guys think? So essentially, four weeks, I think it makes sense to get it done in October, A, that's a year from when we did it last, and then, B, it looks like November starts, takes it a little bit busier.
I'd rather get it done earlier than later.
Okay, and then, it's helpful for me, because then I can't really write my new goals until I have the feedback on what you want to target, so, okay, great.
All right, so we'll go with that, then. So Pam will send all that to us?
She will, I'll have her email you, she is currently stranded in Aruba, is, I'm sure we all feel really bad for her, but all flights, she was supposed to come back Sunday, and all flights are canceled through Wednesday or Thursday, so, when she gets back, I'll have her send you electronic copies of the evaluation.
Is she at the hotel, is she somewhere safe?
She is, she's in a safe location, she's in Aruba, she was supposed to be in St. Martin, and they changed their trip the night before to Aruba.
Oh, really?
Yeah, yeah, and now she's stuck in Aruba, so...
Okay.
Yes.
All right.
All right. The next item on the agenda for tonight is a vote item. The, as you probably recall, last spring, when we put together our budget request, the Advisory Committee asked us to reduce our initial budget request by .25% in order to help fund the increase in cost for King Philip. The other two towns did not vote the higher number for King Philip, and so the two votes carry, and so there is additional money in the town budget that was returned, that was budgeted for KP that was not spent. I would, am recommending at this point that we consider moving forward at the fall town meeting with a request that, for the town to restore the reduction. The reason for that is that over the summer, we, our Title I grant was reduced significantly, and that does fund some staffing positions, so we lost about $10,000 in Title I funds. In addition, we have had quite a few unexpected increases in special education costs. The .25 reduction came out of the special education line, it was our placeholder, and we are gonna need those, that revenue to fund some of the new costs that we've had. So I have talked to the town Finance Director, Todd Lindmark, he is, originally, I was gonna request that we ask for the $28,000 to be restored, his recommendation is that we ask the Advisory Board for the $40,000, and let them determine how much of that, because we, that's our shortfall, let them determine how much they can fund of that. So that would be my recommendation, is that we, we request the, the $40,000, that's the shortfall, and, and wait for direction from the Advisory Board.
Motion on that?
I make a motion that we approve requesting the $40,000 from the town.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion on that? Do you think it makes sense?
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The next thing in your packet is a memo from Trish Kelly, she is our interim Technology Director, and she is asking, per School Committee policy, if we are looking to donate any equipment over, in the total values over 500, the School Committee needs to approve it. So she is recommending, we currently have 30 Mac desktops that are from 2009, and they've aged out of being effectively used in our schools, but there are some districts that are, are seeking technology. She is asking permission to list this on the Technology Director's listserv, and to donate the equipment to a school system in need, should we get an inquiry. If we do not have anybody that's interested in the equipment, she would suggest that we use our current vendor, CRT Recycling in Brockton, Mass., to recycle that old equipment. So I need a recommendation for the Committee, if you're comfortable with that, or...
Okay, so we have a vote to accept that recommendation?
I make a motion that we approve the recommendation.
Can I have a second?
Big question?
Hold on, a second, and then we'll get into discussion.
Okay.
Second, anyone?
Second.
Second. Okay, go.
Having them donated is absolutely phenomenal, have we spoken to anyone else in the town, such as the library, to see if they might want to take on any of them?
Well, she can certainly reach out to, to other town departments first, she just wants to list it, she usually puts, most of the tech directors have a forum where they list any old equipment, but I could ask her to reach out to the library and other...
Senior center?
Yeah.
I mean, there's a lot of places in the town that might use it.
Yep.
Any further discussion?
And if we have to have CRT dispose of them, or recycle them, that, is there a cost associated with that?
I don't believe there is, but I'd have to check on that. I don't believe that there is, I think they come and pick it up.
But if we can get them, if we can donate them, or if people were...
That's definitely the preference.
That's a $75 write-off per machine, essentially, production, that we could, the town could use, I guess, right?
Maybe, yeah, I'd have to check on that, but I'm not sure.
Are we, are we, is it a town?
It's a value and an asset, I don't see why not.
I don't know, I mean, this will tax a lot of...
Yeah, I would have to, I would have to ask, but I can certainly find out.
I think we've used that company, my, my own company has used it, and I think, there is a nominal charge.
Okay.
And when I talk nominal, I'm talking like $10 to $20 per item.
Okay.
So we've donated, or recycled a number of things before, and it's, it's short money, but there is a little bit of expense.
Okay.
Would it be possible to...
Indicate it's free.
Sorry?
It's, at least in the write-up here, it seems to indicate that CRT is free.
Yeah, maybe they do it...
It might be for education, right?
Yeah, that makes sense.
Again, her, her thought is generally when people post those things, other school systems take them right away, so she expects that we'll be able to donate the equipment.
So that's in the second to last paragraph.
Okay, I didn't see that, yeah, so maybe they do it different for the school district, which is not...
The other thing I, the other thing I was wondering about is if we try to donate it in Kent before we recycle it, would the school be able to look at maybe selling them? You know, rather than recycling it, having them done whatever they do with it, they recycle, rip them apart for components, maybe, you know, when we do, like, the book sales, put them out, you know, maybe $50, $75 apiece, let people in town buy them, and then that money goes to the school.
I mean, we can certainly look at it, I mean, what we could do, if you feel more comfortable, is I can have Trish reach out to all town departments first, and if they decline, then post on the website and see if we get an inquiry, and then come back to the Committee if we're not able to donate the equipment with the recommendation from there, if you'd prefer.
That works, that works, man.
Cool. Yeah, I mean, I like the idea of selling them, but I also don't, I don't want to, like, involve in Craigslist and meeting somebody, you know, like, you're, I have a laptop.
Yeah, sometimes the, yeah, the time and the management is more than it's worth, but...
That could be more trouble than it's worth, I mean, they're, they're short money, so...
We still do those book sales where kids can buy books at school, you know, you put them out, and parents decide to buy them.
Well, why don't we try, why don't we try first to donate the equipment, and then if we don't have luck, then we'll come back with a second recommendation?
That seems to make sense.
Okay.
All right, so, oh, we need a vote, actually, on that, so all in favor of that?
Aye.
Process?
Aye.
That's all I have, then, we're on to Subcommittee Report.
All right, so move on to Subcommittee, starting off with King Philip.
Last meeting, I'd say the two of the bigger things that we had discussions on, actually three things, budget, some revisions to the budget, also having to do with the Superintendent search, and the last one, what? Oh, district goals. Nothing really out of the ordinary outside of the Superintendent search, which is probably drawn a little bit more inquiry.
Jeff, what were the changes to the budget?
There was...
Was there additional money allocated for emergency and deficiency, or...
One second. I believe that was scheduled to take place in the fall, wasn't it?
Yeah, that's what I was wondering.
Part of it, just to detail the letters, certifications for the fiscal 2018, for KP, $31,397,584, and a capital budget of $2,002.2, resulting assessments of $25,400,000. And then, some of the adjustments that they had were total operating debt service, 3.24 increase. Let's see what some of the differences were. Norfolk difference required minimum local contribution was $20,000, which was $20,000 less versus the final. Town, I'm sorry, increase, the final was 6.1 from Norfolk, and the town meeting was at 6.1, 6.164 is the 6.144. Difference between MLC and net budget was, let me see, 4.293 versus the town meeting that was 4.358, which was less $65,000. Town meeting difference of a portion for amount between towns by enrollment was a difference of 22,324, where the enrollment was at 1.466, and the town meeting was at 1.489. So there were just a couple differences.
When, you, when's your next meeting?
Next week.
Might be that, because as I recall, I think in fall, they had to revisit the issue, or at least I thought that's what's happening.
Yeah, I thought they were considering appropriating more money from E&amp;D to the operating budget, but it may not, may not have happened.
I guess if you get a chance, see if you can ask on that, because that...
There was nothing, nothing on the E&amp;D that was basically addressed.
Okay, it might happen back in June, I can't...
I mean, we, the discussion prior during the spring months, and towards the end of the school year, were to address or to utilize some of that E&amp;D money, but as you knew from last spring, we had some issues to try and address with the E&amp;D, considering that we had monies we had to get back that we had previously paid.
Right, that's what I'm wondering, was that resolved, was, not yet, okay.
Okay, because it's, yeah, because we met, whatever, mid-June, and then this still went down to the last minute, as far as everything else, so, yeah, I don't think it's been...
And remember, that's not paper money, that's book money, so...
Right. All right, we'll see where that goes then. All right, we'll see where that goes then. Is that it for King Philip?
That's it.
Thanks, sir. Moving on to policy?
All right, for policy, we have two second readings, the access to digital resources and the empowered individuals policy, no changes since the first reading. And then, on top of that, next meeting, we're going to be bringing forward, I believe, three policies that, right now, are looking like they're all just going to be incidental changes, the administration of medical, of meds to students, the notice of the meetings, the meeting notice law updated, as well as the advisory committees for the, and the subcommittees, so that's four. They're all, right now, looking like incidental changes, there's just some little tweaks to wording in the policies, so those should be coming forward next meeting, for first and all, which is incidentals, it will just be a one-time read.
Okay. All right, that's it for that, then?
That's it for that.
Okay. So, moving on to new items, we just got to approve the minutes from last school meeting, which I think just three of us doing.
I make a motion that we approve the minutes.
Okay, do I second?
I'll second him.
And then, assuming no further discussion, or if there is further discussion, but all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay.
Not here.
We are scheduled for Tuesday, October 10th, does that work for everyone?
Yes, can we just kind of pull back to the superintendent evaluation, when will you need our responses?
Um, all right, so we're at October 10th for a meeting...
And the packet will go out the Thursday prior, so if you have the evaluation, it would go in the packet, the Thursday prior.
That's the due, that's really the due date for him.
Well, he would have to have it done by then, yeah.
Whatever, I guess whatever that Monday is?
Second.
The first Monday in October?
Pardon?
First Monday in October?
Yeah, October, yeah, I think that's October 2nd.
Yep.
We need to get this to you by then.
Right, so give me three days in total to then get that compiled, send it in, such that it can be out in time to meet our stuff.
Okay.
Is that okay with everybody?
That's fine.
So Pam?
She will send it out Thursday or Friday, as soon as she gets back, and I'll have her send it.